Are you okay with that? Sure. I know you can't come back.
Good evening, everyone. Nice to hear so much buzz and chatter in the room tonight. This is nice. So we'll call to order the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for Tuesday, November 10th, at 6:34 PM. Please stand for our invocation and then remain standing for a moment of silence.
So God our Father, we thank you. Thank you for our Father. When we come to you tonight, Father, as we do so many times, to ask for your guidance, your counsel, your wisdom. Father, I thank you for the people in this room, for their leadership, for their desires to make this a great community. So Father, that's what we ask for tonight, that you would bless them with that kind of guidance and wisdom. Well, Father, we pray for healing upon our land. We look through the disgruntled, lack of unity. Also, Father, for the devastation of violence. God, we ask for your healing. We thank you for all you do to bless our lives. Thank you in Jesus. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Commissioner Ward, would you lead us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is Madam Clerk Treasure a roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilman Spann.
Here.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yep.
Councilman Minchuck.
Here.
Councilwoman Uszak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Vice President White.
Here.
And President Bella.
Here.
All present.
All present, thank you. Moving on to petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. We have a special presentation tonight to the Alliance Club recognition. I'd like to call on Jan Orlich, our park director, to present the award.
Ellen, if I could have you and your group up front, please. This is Ellen Hennessy, and I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Carol Rozell.
Carol Rozell with the Lions Club. I would like to extend a heartfelt thank you to Ellen Hennessy and the Lions Club for their service within the community. During the summer with a raging pandemic, our park sat seeing an overflow of users, and the Lions Club recognized the park department needed assistance. And every Monday, helped us pick up trash and empty garbage throughout our parks, making them look decent and presentable for the public to enjoy. They have also participated in our Santa Parade, providing snacks for all that attended. Aside from that service, they also provided, to the Maryville Parks, they also collect and donate eyeglasses throughout Maryville. They host fundraisers to help the disadvantaged. They participate in community events, and they also sponsor the Candy Mint donation with proceeds going to support our community. I would like to present this plaque to you for your service to the park department and the community. We thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Jan. We also have our proclamation tonight for recognizing Small Business Saturday. Madam Clerk Treasure?
Yes. The town of Maryville has a proclamation. Small Business Saturday, whereas small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that hold communities together, and whereas a majority of U.S. consumers agree it is important to the small business that they value and their value in these communities, and most willing to pledge support for a buy local business initiative like Small Business Saturday. And whereas we join along with the local Chamber of Commerce in supporting America's locally owned small businesses, and whereas the town of Maryville supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our community. And we're asked to recognize Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 28th, 2020, a day to celebrate and support small businesses. And now therefore, the Maryville Town Council hereby proclaims November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday throughout the town of Maryville, and urge all citizens to join with us in this observance as we celebrate the accomplishments of small business owners and their employees, and encourage the development of new small businesses in the town of Maryville. In testimony therewith, we, the members of the Maryville Town Council, set our hand and seal to the town of Maryville this 10th day of November 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion from the council?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettitt, second by Mrs. Uszak for approval of the proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to the proclamation honoring the service and heroes of Methodist Hospital South Lake during Maryville since 1975. Madam Clerk Treasure?
Yes. The town of Maryville proclamation stated Indiana honoring the service and heroes of Methodist Hospitals, South Lake serving Maryville since 1975. Whereas Methodist Hospitals' commitment to excellence in the provision of health care for Northwest Indiana has been a hallmark of its existence since the early 1900s. And whereas Methodist Hospitals has expanded services over the decade, to reflect, I'm sorry, the decades, to reflect the changing health care needs of the community, and responded by establishing new inpatient and outpatient services and technologies for citizens throughout the region, regardless of diagnosis or personal circumstances. And whereas the construction of the Methodist Hospitals' South Lake Campus in Maryville, Indiana in 1975, with its 165-bed facility marked the hospital's growth as a regional health care system. And whereas 45 years of growth was further amplified by the opening of Methodist Hospitals' first immediate care center, Methodist Care First, in 2017, along Maryville's vibrant business and medical Broadway corridor. And whereas 130,000 patient visits took place within the walls of the Methodist Hospitals' South Lake Campus facilities in Maryville just last year. And whereas a full continuum of patient services is provided by more than 1,000 Methodist Hospitals' South Lake Campus staff associates that enrich the quality of life for the citizens of Maryville, Indiana, contribute to the town's economy, and reflect Methodist's values of I care, which is integrity, compassion, accountability, respect, and excellence. And whereas Methodist Hospitals has been recognized regionally and nationally for a number of honors and distinguished awards, including the Joint Commission's Gold Seal of Approval for Hospital Accreditation, National Symbol of Excellence in Safety, and Magnet Recognition for Nursing Excellence, the highest national honor granted to hospitals, and the only designation in Northwest Indiana. And whereas Methodist Hospitals' South Lake Campus has consistently demonstrated its commitment to bettering the community by forging productive partnerships with business and civic organizations in the town of Maryville. Whereas quality health care remains central to the Methodist Hospitals' South Lake Campus' promise of service to the community that is delivered by dedicated staff who, during this unprecedented period of the COVID-19 global pandemic, has risen to the heroic heights to assure that everyone in need of health care has received the services they needed, regardless of diagnosis. And whereas Methodist Hospitals will be celebrating its staff heroes with a public virtual event on November 12th, 2020, titled "The Evening of Methodist Hospitals Virtual Foundation Event: A Salute to Methodist's Heroes," beginning at 7:00 PM via Zoom at this link, which I'm not going to be able to give you guys. Whereas additional information may be found at the Methodist Hospital Foundation website at, I can give you this, www.methodisthospitals.org/foundation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Maryville Town Council hereby proclaims the months of November and December of 2020 as Salute to Methodist Heroes Month, and urge all residents to support and celebrate the many years of service and the heroes providing quality care to the town of Maryville, and participate in the Salute to Methodist Heroes virtual event on November 12th, 2020. In testimony whereof, we, the members of the Maryville Town Council, set our hand and the seal of town in Maryville on this 10th day of November 2020.
No move, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettitt, second by Mrs. Uszak for approval of the proclamation honoring the services and heroes of Methodist Hospitals, South Lake, serving Maryville since 1975, and support their virtual event on November 12th of this week. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I'd like to call on Mr. Matt Doyle. Come to the microphone. Matt is the president and CEO of Methodist Hospitals, and he'd like to say a few words. We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the committee, Town Council. Thank you very much. It's quite an honor to accept this on behalf of Methodist Hospitals. What I can say is we are very proud of our organization and very proud to serve you and the community. That is our role, is one of service, and we really want to be here, especially in this time of need, for everybody within the community. We want to make sure that if you have the ability to participate in the virtual event this Thursday, 7 o'clock Zoom, the way that we all participate now via Zoom, we'd be very excited to have you. And it's really there to salute the heroes, which are the real folks doing the work at our hospital, providing great clinical care, all of the first responders involved, and all the essential personnel throughout the hospital. Again, on behalf of those folks, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on tonight, we have a letter from the Town Engineering Administrator endorsing Core Construction's recommendation to approve payment for application number 11. Mr. King.
Yes, President Bella and the Town Council. The town's professional staff and myself have reviewed the October 2020 billing for work completed at the new Dean and Barbara White Community Center. We concur with Core Construction's recommendation in approving payment for application 11 to the vendor's list of below in a total amount of $1,938,835.07.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Pettitt, seconded by, was that Mr. White?
That was Mr. White.
For approval of the $1.938,835.07 payment for the Core Construction Application Number 11. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Moving on tonight to the consent agenda, we have the accounts payable voucher approval for November 10th, 2020, and the approval of the Town Council meeting minutes of October 27th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Uszak, seconded by Mr. Span. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, Budget and Finance, Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. President. My report tonight basically is going to touch on a few issues that I think the Finance Committee wanted to talk about, and hopefully in the near future, we can have some other talks about what I'm getting ready to talk about. It's a great thing that we got the $10 million donation from the Dean and Barbara White Foundation. However, being the chairman of the Finance Committee did not know one single thing about it till like 30 minutes before. Now, I know Sean says they want to keep it a secret. In government, you don't keep secrets. Specifically in the terms of when there's other unelected officials, or should I say other town members that are not elected, that does have that knowledge. And I just wanted to tell you, I was really kind of on fire for like a week or so, but I kind of calmed down today, so I won't say all the things that I wanted to say because I talked to my cousin Jasper, and he told me, "Don't go there today." I also talked to the State Board of Accounts because I need to know these things. This is something I shouldn't have to call the State Board of Accounts about, but they gave me a link on guidance for receiving gifts and contributions, and that's something I went over, and I think that we're going to have to talk about it again, just so we can put everything in line here, because I've not seen one document. And this has been going on for four months, haven't seen one document. So as the chairman of the Finance Committee, I think that was a little, I don't want to say disrespectful as much as excluded, and I think I talked about this maybe a couple of weeks ago, where all council members, no council member should have anything that they can't tell the rest of the community.
Mr. Svetinoff, do you want to address that with Mr. Leonard, how this came down and what the request was from the foundation that we keep it confidential, et cetera? Because I didn't find out about it, Leonard, until well into the process too. But that was...
And I understand.
What their wishes were, as a $10 million donor.
Yes.
I think it's up to us to honor what their wishes are. I didn't feel bad about it at all. I'm very grateful.
But in the end, you did find out. Marge didn't know, she sits on the committee. Don didn't know he sits on...
It wasn't a committee issue. It wasn't a finance committee issue.
Anything financial.
It was a gift.
I understand that, anything, and that's why I had to go to the State Board of Accounts so they could tell me what the guidelines were.
So are you saying we should have turned that $10 million down because we couldn't inform you?
One of the things that the seven of us need to realize, and we need to have a workshop on the definition, Mr. President, of what these committees actually do. The Budget and Finance Committee prepares the budget. That's all they do. Council Affairs writes ordinances. That's all they do. We seem to stray away from what these committees do and what their assignments are. Maybe we need to go back to Chapter 2 of the Code and look at those committee assignments and what they were intended to perform.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not gonna, I will tell you a story, Leonard, very quickly. When I was in Pat's shoes, we had a multi-multi-million dollar project that was going to come down to Colorado, LTD commodities, and it was released when you were on the council, Rick, and the governor, the governor called me as the town manager, saying, "What the hell did your council do spitting out information to the press?" From that moment on in 1998, I'm confidential. If you guys don't like that style, I'm sorry. You know, I don't...
I don't like that style. I represent, I represent...
Then maybe I'll call Bruce in Wyoming, and we'll give him the money back.
We haven't got the money yet.
Unbelievable, Mr. President.
Well, it's not unbelievable. It's not unbelievable.
The work that Joe put into this, and we're questioning this on the floor.
Yes. Because it wasn't, it was brought in late. Now, we can continue this discussion here, or we can set it up for another meeting. Because, hold on, Mr. President. Hold on, Mr. President.
Okay, Leonard.
I am a councilperson.
Yes, you are.
I am the vice president also of the RDC. I'm also the vice president of this council. So you can't sit up here and tell me, Sean, that I shouldn't know something, or Marge shouldn't know anything, or Don shouldn't. Who made that decision to tell us that we weren't going to be involved in it? We're not against it. We just want to know.
It was actually the foundation. They made that decision.
I like to see it in writing.
Okay, Mr. Svetinoff, did you want to offer anything on that?
Here's the thing, in dealing with these high-level, high-dollar gifts, the biggest way to kill a gift of that size is to have, to not keep some type of confidentiality and some kind of discreteness, because if that news is released early, the donor then could pull the money back and say, "You know what? I'm not going to give the gift." So it was a decision that was made, that was worked on with the foundation. The foundation, of course, is a very low-key, low-key player, and they wanted to remain, for us to remain discreet, and we did that. Now, at the end of the day, we did advise everyone. We did go ahead and have a vote on the floor regarding the naming rights. And Councilman White, I did talk to the State Board of Accounts.
I did too.
And we have got, we have secured the bulletin, and we have given specific direction as to the Clerk Treasure, when we receive funds in the beginning of January.
Absolutely.
When the gift is funded, that we will, how the money is supposed to be accounted for.
I understand that. For me, it's still about transparency. And if it takes a secret to get something, maybe you should look at a different way of approaching that, Joe. Because I do have constituents that want their councilmen to be part of this. So I would just ask, well, who elected you at all? So why are you more amenable to the process than I am? Or to Marge, or to, and then Sean, from your perspective, as far as telling us about what the chairmanships of certain committees are, you never gave me anything, so how am I supposed to follow some rules? Nobody gave me anything, so we're basing what I know from myself. So don't give me a booklet to fly a plane, and the instructions not in there. So back to the Finance Committee report. That's my, that's my issue there.
I would like to add, though, if I could, Mr. White, to your committee, if any council member here wants to accept $10 million for the town, I don't need to know about it. Just accept the money. I'm good with that.
But you, but you know more.
The thing is, we're not talking about spending money. We're talking about getting money.
I'm sure you know, and don't put me in a position like, oh, Leonard's against the money. There's a way that you do everything. And to feel excluded as a councilman doesn't make me feel good. I don't care who gives us money.
Well, okay.
I need to know. From this day forward, and when there's dollars coming to Maryville of any significant amount, all councilmen should know, not just...
What's your definition of significant amount? I need to know that.
$10 million.
Well, that shouldn't be an issue anymore then, so that's fine.
Second, as far as the Finance and Budget Committee is, back in January, Sean and others told the public that we had a $3 million saving on the community center. And I haven't seen where that $3 million is at. Now, maybe some people changed their wording as to the $3 million and what it's caused. But if those dollars are there, that's another thing the Finance Committee would like to know about, those dollars as well. So with that said, I think we all understand that if we can deal with these issues before I have to come out here in the public portion and talk about it, then we'll make better and we won't be looking like we're looking right now with all the eyes on us. Nothing else to add to that. Thank you.
Council Affairs, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes, I had a meeting last week, Mr. President, and one of our ordinances, that would be ordinance 20-17, that's involving amending the fees for the fire inspector. And we will bring that up tonight with our ordinance 20-17 on a reading. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing new, other than the leaf collection is still ongoing, and all the guys are getting ready for winter. Kevin, you got anything new?
Halfway through. Got three more weeks of it, so leaves are falling, we should get them all before it's going to light. Just getting trucks ready for the snow. All the summer equipment put away and the winter stuff brought out, so hopefully there's no surprises coming at us. That's it.
I've got a question. Mr. Hurst, Mr. Smith.
I'd like to thank Public Works. You guys did an excellent job on those branches from that Republican that lives by me. Also, you guys did an excellent job on that leaf collection. It's really looking good in the neighborhood. It's nothing where the drains are getting clogged up or anything. I really thank you, want to thank you.
Have you guys met with Waste Management yet?
Not yet.
All right, because here's my, here's my problem. I've seen my neighbor across the street, she put out her, she had her leaves, and they were in a bag, and Waste Management didn't pick them up. So then she had to go back out and dump them out, which is bull. Waste Man, we pay, she pays Waste Management because they pick up her garbage, so her bill had to be current. So why didn't the guy pick up the stupid bags? And I got bags around the corner from me that people put out that they didn't pick up. So when are we going to have a meeting with Waste Management?
As soon as we can get one scheduled.
We've been trying to schedule one. I'm sorry, Mr. President.
It's been a while.
That's unacceptable at this time for me.
Okay.
So whoever, Pat, whoever's got to set up a meeting, let's get it done within the next week. Thank you.
I agree.
Mr. Minchuck?
That is all, sir.
Elections, Public Relations, and Census 2020, Mr. Pettitt.
Is the election over? Do we know? Are you sure? Precinct 12 turned in their tapes. I don't know about the rest of everybody.
I think there's two states still voting.
On a happier PR note, I will congratulate Mr. Minchuck and the Maryville Pirates for winning the sectional 48 to 14. Jeff, awesome job. However, Mr. Minchuck, we also took a sectional title at 59-59 Broadway, 28 to 14. So both teams, double sectional champs in football. Maryville will play Elkhart in Elkhart Friday night, and Andrain will play Pioneer down in Royal Central, so I hope I don't get lost, Pat, going down there. Good luck, Jeff, to the Pirates and to the 59ers.
Anything else, Mr. Pettitt? Environmental Affairs, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President. Actually, I'm going to chime in with Richard Hardaway, trying to get this meeting set up with Waste Management, so we can deal with those issues, not only of them not doing very well. I think Sean said at many occasions, and I think we have other individuals that were complaining about they were collecting garbage too early. So the sooner we get that meeting set up, it's time. And that's coming from the environmental affairs. Secondly, Mr. President, as you probably know, how COVID numbers are increasing significantly. I hope we don't have to set up Zoom, but it looks like that may happen again, because actually, since I believe June, we've had at least eight employees that tested positive for COVID. So it's walking around, it's flowing around, it's everywhere. So I just wanted to make sure that we, because I briefly talked to the judge, and he concurred that the governor was saying that, you know, these numbers are increasing, and we may go back to the lockdown. Now personally, I don't feel like I never left a lockdown. I'm always at home, so that's not an issue for me. I think that's it on environmental affairs. That's it on environmental affairs.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes, I had a meeting last week with the council members, and the representative from United Healthcare have presented his program, and we will probably be voting on it in December, the proposal.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Public Safety, Mr. Minchuck.
Nothing new. Chief, you got anything? We're good.
Economic Development, Mr. Pettitt.
Mr. President, just real quick with Pat, there is another very strong development down at Amerplex at the Crossroads that Pat has received a plat request, and as many of you know, in Amerplex at the Crossroads, the plat committee approves that, which includes Pat, the president of the Plan Commission, Sheila, the town engineer, and I always forget the fifth member, I can't remember if it's Mr. Svetinoff. They will approve that plat. That will be a 35-acre development that Pat's been working on for, how long? Nine months? Six months. So look for that announcement here coming in November and December.
Anything else?
That's all.
Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Uszak.
Yes, as I had, as I had reported before, all four parks in my area are completed with the renovation, but we have one swing down on Hendrick Street. Jan, I don't know if you knew about that.
No, but I do now.
Oh, okay. Well, I just found out myself, so maybe you could have someone check that out. Okay, thank you. And that is my report, Mr. President.
Utility Liaison, Mr. Span.
No report at this time.
Abandoned Properties, Mr. White.
Yes, Mr. President, and I think our town manager was going to tell you what I'm getting ready to ask him. Maybe you didn't hear me, I thought maybe you would tell them what I'm getting ready to ask you, but since you don't know, I'm going to tell you. At the North Barn. And let me tell you what that means. That building is still there, four months after we signed the contract for it to be demolished. Now, I do understand that Pat Riordan said was waiting for some kind of sampling thing to come back from IEDM. But at the same time, I do know the sampling doesn't take that long, and I do know we have special landfills to deal with those type of asbestos or whatever type of waste there, CND landfill. Need to get that done. We got like six weeks left in this, and you kind of told me that it'd be done by now, so I just need a date.
I did, Councilman, and I'll take responsibility for it not being done. We were in contact with the successful bidder again, expressed our displeasure with the fact that it's not done. Uh, expressed our displeasure with the fact that it's not down. Uh, he, he did say that, uh, it took longer than anticipated, obviously, to get the asbestos firm in. Those results should be back any day from IDM. And we have this in writing. His anticipation is that that property will be down and cleared by the last week of this month. That's a letter I, I, I have no problem sharing with you and everyone else.
Thank you, Pat. Additionally, Pat and I had a small discussion about the contacting the individual that owns the 61st Avenue Plaza. Um, just because we want to make some more, now, I'm not going to say anything what we, we just talked about. But, but the issue is that that is some abandonment and, and we're still getting illegal dumping behind it. I don't know, it's, it's becoming irregular now, Rick, you know, I, I never seen it that way before. I say that the legal dumping behind the 61st Avenue and Broadway Plaza hasn't increased or is being steady. Uh, myself and, and the town manager did talk about, uh, contacting the owner. And I gave him the number specifically because I talked to him myself and he does want to do something that only type things, but that's something I, I'm not going to take any further. I just wanted to let you guys know that's what we've been talking about. Other than that, Mr. President, nor other.
Sheila did talk to the owners, right, Sheila? Did you talk to the property owners there, 61st and Broadway? Okay.
I was talking to all this, uh, talking to the gentleman, Mr. David Israel, now in Florida. He called his secretary. He asked his secretary to call him. He's called Calvin, right, he gave him the number. And he gets back from Florida, he is going to call and he does. And myself, Calvin, right, Vic. But as far as the, the document is down there, there's a gentleman that works for, uh, Mr. Israel, who is constantly picking that up. Constantly. Vic is down there in contact with you guys. He, that's his name.
Tim?
Tim is picking the, the stuff up daily. He goes home and comes back and it's another mattress out there. I don't know what we can do about that, except for we are aware of Tim Allen and the secretary. Because he called her home. So, uh, I, I, I can only say, um, Mr. White and to the council that Vic and I are doing all we can that property clean. Uh, we constantly, um, call, I was, Vic thought I was kind of rough with the secretary. But I was kind of trying to get, that's how I got her to tell me that, um, Mr. Israel is in Florida. And when he gets back, he's gonna take care of it.
Okay, thank you, Sheila. Anything else?
Nothing else for me.
Town identity and beautification, Mrs. Uselak.
No report at this time, Mr. President.
Community center and recreation center co-chairs, Mr. Minchuck, Mr. Pettit.
Yes, uh, I'll turn over to Sean here in just a second for details, but I just wanted to say something tonight. Uh, this past Saturday, we had a chance to walk through the center and the, uh, the progress is just amazing. Uh, when you walk in this place and you see what's been accomplished so far, um, we're at that point where things are really coming together right now. Uh, we discussed a few items at the meeting. I'll leave the details to Sean. Um, but one point we're at right now with the, the structure being closed and things starting to come together is we're gonna start looking for sponsors. And hopefully with the, the help of our friends over here with the media, they could help blast this. That would be great. Uh, for all our local corporations, our big businesses, we're looking for sponsorship for different sections and factions of the center. Um, we need to get this out in the public to see what's available, what we can do, what we can't do. Um, we need to know as soon as possible. But we're also gonna have a sponsorship night on December 9th at 6:00 PM. Uh, we're gonna be inviting our, our major corporations and businesses in the area to come out, show what we have to offer and go from that point. So any help you guys can give us from the media, that'd be great. Get it out there, hopefully get some phone calls from some people with a little bit of help. Uh, Sean, so yours.
Thanks, Jeff. Uh, the other part of that with the sponsorship night and what we're trying to do is again, the Dean and Barbara White Family Foundation with the gift will be drawing down $2 million at a time for the next five years, uh, for operational purposes. But just like anything else, a car, a house, this town hall, after a while, things will happen to that building, even though it's brand new. Uh, for example, the courts will need to be urethane'd every year. Um, they'll need to be stripped after five years. So what we want to do with these other community sponsorships and naming rights inside the center is set up a, basically a capital fund, uh, again, through the Legacy Foundation, a non-reverting fund that Jan will be able to use to have the floors redone. Um, if something goes out after five years or seven years, uh, we'll have the funds available. So we're looking, uh, for a variety of sponsorships, uh, in that aspect. Uh, Jeff touched on the community night, which is December 9th at 6:00 PM. Um, our host will be Structure Point. Uh, they will be hosting, uh, probably cocktails and hors d'oeuvres and that sort of thing. Um, we talked about at the RDC meeting, a couple of the change orders that we're doing. Uh, one of them is encasing two of the staircases to make them safer, uh, for the basketball and volleyball players. Uh, later on in the agenda, we're gonna have ordinance 20-16, which will set the fees, um, for the different activities that Jan has out there. Uh, the use of the fitness center, renting of the courts, the hourly courts, a, a, a bevy of, of different things that the committee, uh, has been working on, uh, over these several months. Um, we talked about the mezzanine level, uh, as to what we're doing. I know that Mr. Bella is working diligently on honoring Dean and Barbara White for their family contribution. Uh, we're gonna have a very large plaque and a, and an illuminated picture of, of Mr. and Mrs. White up there. Uh, so we're working on that. Um, Jan, I kind of turned to you. Did, did Jeff or I miss anything for the other members of the council?
I think you hit it off. Um, I don't know if you want to mention the, uh, logos and the, uh, three courts?
Uh, yeah, we're, you know, one of the sponsorships that we're looking for, uh, we're putting town, the town seal at the jump center circle for all three basketball courts. And we're investigating, uh, putting Maryville on the end lines of each basketball court. But we're also looking for, uh, sponsorships for the courts, uh, for a five-year period. Uh, so we're looking, uh, at that as well. Um, there are sponsorships for the football field slash concession stand, um, a variety of different things that Structure Point has come up with a PowerPoint presentation. So, uh, again, um.
Sean, I think I might butt in just for a second. I know a lot of these sponsorships, of course, as construction progresses, excuse me, we're pressed for time. If I'm not mistaken, with the basketball courts, they're already deurethane these things within a, excuse me, within about a week or so. So that's why we're kind of pushing a little bit more for the courts right now. If anybody wants to sponsor the courts, if they can get back to us within, within the week. Other than that, I think everything else is kind of as is.
Yep. Um, again, work, work is progressing, uh, you know, quite quickly, uh, on this facility. Um, I would like to, and Jeff, I know, um, with, with your work schedule, everyone's work schedule, uh, we want to have the committee meetings out at the center from now on. And, and again, I would encourage all of the council. Mr. Bella made a change in the committee membership. All seven council members are now members of this committee. And so if, if you want to see what's happening or you have questions, come to the committee and, and we can discuss whatever issues or whatever concerns, or you can see what the progress is. Uh, I can't stress enough, um, and I'd like to give a kudos out to, to Core and to all the trades that we've hired. The subs that we've hired have all been union shops and, and it shows in that building. The quality of the workmanship you get from a union shop, uh, so I'm very pleased about that. What I'd like to do with Jeff's permission as co-chair is get another meeting, uh, sometime next week. Um, I will check with you and then we'll have Linda send out the notice and we'll meet up either Wednesday or Thursday night next week. Um, you know, 4 o'clock, Jeff, if your schedule permits it. Uh, and run through any other things that Jan might have or Andrew might have for us. And then we can update, uh, where we're at with the sponsorship level. So let's shoot for Thursday at 4 o'clock at the center. Pat, if you want to talk to, uh, check with Linda, all right?
You might want to just reiterate that that sponsorship night on December 9th will take place at the event center.
Yes.
Dean and Barbara White.
Absolutely. Even though it will not be finished, we've asked Core to obviously clean up some areas and focus on the community room and the pre-function area. They're already getting started laying carpet in, in, in some areas and, and wrapping some things up. So, uh, they will have that ready for us, yes, for December 9th at the, the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. So.
Sean, are you talking about Thursday, the 19th?
Is that okay?
Or I'm sorry, 12th?
The 19th, yeah.
I was gonna say 12th.
The 19th.
Um, yeah, that's fine. I'm good with it.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
You got that, Pat, the 19th at 4 o'clock at the center? All right, uh, that's all I have, Mr. President. That was a long one.
Uh, department and commissioner reports, Lake County Siloise Management District, Mr. White.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Leaf collection has also started countywide. Uh, the areas that are gonna be leaf collected is the Dyer Township, Calumet Township, Union Township, Center Township, and parts of Holbert Township. I believe that'll be done until maybe the first of December or until the first, uh, snowfall. Nothing else to add to that.
Thank you. Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Mr. Hardaway.
We meet next one.
Stormwater management resources, Mr. Lake.
You can hear the rain right now. And, uh, I just want to urge the public to not put their leaves in the street when that happens. If those over the rains, Public Works, they do keep the roads clear, but they can't be everywhere all at once. So if everybody can keep their leaves within the grassed area and the parkway and out of the streets, that'd be very much appreciated.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, department directors and Mr. Reardon, any reports from departments tonight? Jan?
None this evening.
Okay. Remember you have something for us? Mr. King?
Uh, none tonight, sir.
Okay. Mr. Reardon?
I just want to, uh, thank the professional staff once again and the council for your assistance with, uh, Project Axel. As you all know, and the public may also know, um, we had a groundbreaking for the project. Um, and, uh, while I'm biased, I think that it was a great event. Um, it was great, uh, to see our, our governor take time out of his schedule and many other dignitaries and business owners, uh, to celebrate this, uh, $25 million investment in the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on tonight to general orders, we have ordinance 20-16. Madam Clerk Treasure, this is the parks non-reverting fees.
Would you like for me to read it?
I would think the first paragraph.
Okay. An ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, fixing the parks non-reverting fees for the year 2021, whereas it is necessary by Indiana state law to establish a fee structure for the parks non-reverting fund for the town of Maryville. And whereas the town council has determined the following fees for the different programs offered by the town of Maryville's Park Department for the year 2021. Now therefore be it ordained pursuant to the authority granted by the Constitution and legislature of the state of Indiana, be it enacted by the town council of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, the following approved fees. And there are several fees, um, regarding rentals, field court rentals, program, um, sessions, adult fitness, youth fitness, adult education, youth education, youth low-cost programming, free community programs, adult sports leagues, 10-week sessions, youth sport leagues, 8-week sessions, volleyball, open gym, climbing wall, climbing wall birthday package, fitness center, fitness center... Fitness Center one-month membership and Fitness Center daily rates, all included.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion for approval by Mr. Pettit, second by Mrs. Uselak for approval 20-16. First reading. Questions or comments? This is necessary due to all the different activities that are gonna be going on at the community center. So. Hearing no comments. Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call, please.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway? Councilman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
All in favor?
All in favor, 7-0. This motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 20-17. Madam Clerk Treasure.
This is ordinance, um, amending town code sections 7.5-4 entitled Inspection and Registration Fees, 6-21 entitled permits, and 6-28 entitled penalties. And in ordinance number 19-09, being in ordinance establishing, amending the renewing renewal dates for the town business license and hazardous material registration and authorizing the clerk treasurer to bill and collect the annual business license fee, hazardous material registration fee, and alarm permit fee at the same time. Reappealing all town code sections and ordinances or parts thereof in conflict where therewith.
Motion to approve for discussion.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Span for approval of ordinance 20-17. Mr. Pettit?
Uh, when, uh, Councilwoman Uselak had the council affairs meeting, uh, we discussed the origin of this ordinance. And, and Rick, you will recall, being on the council at the time, that at that time, it was the Maryville Chamber of Commerce. They worked closely with the town manager and, and you on the council to establish this. Uh, this morning at the board of directors meeting, I was asked, uh, about the ordinance. Pat's gonna get a copy to the president, which, uh, or chairman of the board, Dave Lassiter, and the president, Deanne Patina, uh, so we know what the business community, uh, get their input. Um, Pat, David specifically asked me, and I think you were gonna research that with, uh, the clerk treasurer, how many business licenses, how many businesses we have in town that the clerk treasurer bills. I don't know. Did you have a chance to get that number?
It's, it's approximately 1309.
1309, thank you, madam. Clerk Treasure. I paused there.
I think our attorney had a comment on the fire inspection fees that were to be amended. Am I correct, Joe?
Yes, I, I could briefly go through the ordinance very quickly.
Sure.
Um, section one has to do with inspection registration fees. What we've done is we've gone ahead and adjusted up the fire inspection fees and hazardous material and storage, uh, related fees. Section two has to do with permitting and has to do with the fire inspector and plan review. We've upped the sprinkled buildings, the unsprinkled buildings, and the, um, fire alarm sprinkler and hood system, new or replacement. And these are the application fees for the same. Uh, section three has to do with penalties. What we've done is we've basically doubled the penalties if people don't comply in doing the inspections. We've gone from first offense from 250 to 500, for second violation from 500 to 1,000, and for subsequent violations after that, 2,000 a clip. So that is definitely a deterrent to make sure that people follow the rules of the road. And then, uh, section four has to do with the business licensing, um, itself. And what we've done is we, we've done the application, the reapplication or the inspection. We've just upped all those $50. So those are the changes that have been made to these different, uh, sec, town code sections and ordinances. So at this time, I hope the town council entertains this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Stunton. Now, Mr. President, that was also a question that the chamber board asked. Is how much are the business licenses going up? And I knew that with both for renewals and new businesses, we were adjusting it. I didn't know the dollar amount, Joe. Thank you for clarifying that. Hopefully Chaz and Karen pick up, pick up on that.
No problem. I have a question, Mr. President, for the clerk treasurer.
What?
Have the, did you, did you start sending out the business licenses?
I held it for this, but we were going to do it this week, so.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk Treasure. We have to get those licenses out under the old, uh, fees. They should have been out in September.
Well, no, we normally send out renewals in November and that's, that.
Well, we sent them out in, uh, end of September, October, man.
I was told November. Of course, this is my first year, so this is my first time doing renewals. But I was told by the office staff and Jean that they went out in November.
But we need to get them out under the old fee. Because these, now you're not gonna be able to be, you know, people are gonna be late filing for their licenses.
Um, it is, um, I held it until Thursday to send them out. They're already ready to go, um, waiting to see what was the pleasure of the council, whether or not the council wanted us to send out a notice for the renewals about, it, it, let me, let me say, the reinspection fee. fee, because we weren't, we weren't collecting, we had not been collecting even the re-inspection fee in the past that we should have been collecting, which is one of the things that we caught. Uh, my office has now caught that we were not getting the fees that we were supposed to get. And we have been, um, and, uh, probably Sheila could speak better to this, um, paying more for inspections than what we have been collecting from the businesses, and it was starting to become a deficit to the town, um, in terms of the businesses not paying for all the inspections that we were constantly having to do and re-inspect. So we, I was holding it until this Thursday to find out whether or not the council, with the council's pleasure, whether or not they wanted me to also, um, add on a sheet explaining that there will be a $50 re-inspection fee for their renewal, because they need to be re-inspected when they renew their business license, and they should be notified of that with their renewal application.
Mr. Reardon, I did not go to you, because you should've followed up Friday and Monday. The council should've known today that she hadn't sent them out yet. Totally unacceptable.
Mr. Hardaway, I did follow up.
Well, you didn't tell us, so you didn't follow up. That's all I got.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk...
Oh, Mr. President, hang on a second, I guess to Madam Clerk Treasure and to Mr. Snatnov, do we need, do I need to amend my motion to instruct her, are these ready to go in the mail tomorrow, Kelly?
They are already ready, that...
These are under the old ordinance, as Mr. Hardaway?
Tomorrow is a holiday, so that's why I keep saying Thursday.
Right, yeah, Thursday, 'cause yeah, tomorrow, you guys are off, but to Mr. Hardaway's point, those notices are under the current, because this isn't gonna get passed tonight. It's got fees, it's gonna have to be advertised, right, Joe?
Well, it's, it's only on first reading.
It's on first reading as well, so...
Okay.
All right. Mr. President, I call for the vote on 2017, and then I'm gonna make a motion to instruct the clerk treasurer to mail those out first thing Thursday morning. A staff can take them over to 80th place and put them in the mailbox. So I agree with Rich, these businesses need to know and get their bills.
One second.
Madam Clerk Treasure, roll call.
Sure. Um, Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usulak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
7-0, motion carries.
Mr. President, I make a motion, we instruct the clerk treasurer to mail out the current business license bills under the old ordinance, uh, as early as Thursday morning by 9:00 a.m.
Second. Well, let me speak to that.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure that's a...
(laughing).
Let me...
It's not working, 8 o'clock.
Okay, well, she just said they're gonna send them out Thursday.
I'm gonna, we're gonna, they are sitting in the office waiting to be sent, and we were waiting for this to see whether or not you all wanted to charge the re-inspection fee or not. They could've been gone.
I made, I made my motion, close the business Thursday.
Okay, that's better.
Motion to make sure Clerk Treasure's office sends out the, uh, business licenses under the old, um, fees.
Fees.
By close the business Thursday. Motion for Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. Hardaway. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to resolutions tonight, we have resolution 20-33. The resolution moving monies within the general fund, $13,909 increase, with a $13,909 decrease, net effect of zero. Your pleasure.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Pettit, Mr. Hardaway, second, for approval of resolution 20-33, a transfer of funds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Moving on tonight to resolution 20-34. It's a resolution supporting designation of United States Bicycle Route 37 and Route 137 throughout the town of Maryville.
So moved. Sorry.
We have a motion by Mrs. Usulak, second by Mr. Span. Any questions or comments? Jan, would you like to give us a little synopsis on this resolution and why it's here?
Sure. Um, Town of Maryville has been selected by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials to designate USBR, United States Bicycle Route 37, uh, in Maryville. It, um, allows, uh, for our benefit, our residents and businesses, uh, the route will be mapped in the doors, and it'll be, um, throughout the entire state, designating that route, so it could possibly bring people here. Um, a lot of bicycles on the road nowadays, and we can certainly offer dining...
We wanna hear you on the tape, you have to use the microphone, go ahead.
Um, it allows for those, uh, transporting by bicycle to, um, stop at our shops, eat at our diners, so it'll be designated, and it'll be on maps, on the Blue Way and Green Way maps, and possibly on the, and I didn't get this information as of yet, but, um, um, the rest areas would be designated in that as well.
Thank you, Jan.
What, what is the route, what are the routes, Jan?
The route is the, um, E and L Trail.
Is which one, 37?
Yes.
Is it Erie Lacawanna? And what's 137? Says in the resolution, there's two routes. Excuse me, there, there...
Yeah, there's only, uh, 37 in the letter.
There's only 37, the agenda says 2.
Well, the resolution does 2.
I just have US Route 37.
That's what the letter says, too, to...
It's just US.
Okay, so it's just the Erie Lacawanna.
So, okay, so Mrs. Usulak, would your motion carry that, uh, it's just Route 37 and not Route 137?
Yes, it will.
Your second stand, Mr. Span? Hang on, Jan. Mr. Span is your second stand? Thank you. Jan?
Route 37 is designated for Maryville, Route 137 is south of us, and it's a different route. So this was a general letter to Brandon Burgos.
Okay.
So if we approve just 37, that takes care of Maryville, which is all we need to worry about. Okay, that sounds great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Same sign? No, Joe? Motion carries. Uh, BZA actions? I'll turn to, um, Ms. Shine.
Um, BZA actions. Petitioner, Robert M. Farmer, Webhouse Incorporated, owner, Water Tower Properties LLC, a variance of use approval to allow a trade school and a daycare with temporary residence, 7867 and 7877 Grant Street, in a C2 community commercial zoning district. Petitioner is requesting a use variance from section 21-136 to allow a facility with a trade school, childcare, and temporary residence on 2.98 acres in a C2 community commercial zoning district. The facility will contain separate living quarters, bedrooms, and washrooms for females that will allow female veterans and children to receive onsite training and childcare to accomplish the training and related services in six to nine months' time period. As a result of the living quarters, Webhouse Incorporated is seeking this use variance. The facility will have three floors for utilization by the female veterans and their children. The facility is designed for up to 10 female veterans, no more than two children will be permitted per veteran, veterans, with a, uh, total of 16 people living in the house. The lowest floor contains a meeting room, classroom, game room, fitness room, and related facilities. The training will occur on the lowest floor in the classroom and the meeting room, and other facilities will be available to support the living arrangements of the female veterans and their children. The middle floor will have several bedrooms and will also have a kitchen, dining room, a, a greet room to support the necessary living arrangements for the female veterans and their children residing on the premises. The highest floor will be compromised mainly, will, will comprise, I'm sorry, mainly of bedrooms. Each, um, for, each bedroom in the facility will have a bathroom and a shower. Each bedroom is designed to house a female veterans, up to two, um, of her children. No male individuals will be allowed to stay in the overnight facility at any time. The cons, the concept of the kitchen will have one female veteran responsible for meal preparation for one week and rotate the weeks among the residents. The responsible female veteran will prepare the meals with the assistance of other residents. One resident will be in charge of the cleanup. A staff member will reside onsite to enforce the rules and regulations with respect to the temporary residency, training, and daycare. A maximum of 16 occupants will be allowed in the facility. The Veterans Administration and the Department of Defense will provide funding for the acquisition, development, and ongoing operation of the site. This is a prototype program by the Veterans Administration and Department of Defense to support the female veterans and their children by providing them with an efficient way to become trained, um, in the trades while recognizing their family status. The residency of each female veteran will be limited to six to nine months to accomplish the training. A female veteran who is not participating in the training program would be asked to leave the facility. The program is regulated by the Veterans Administration and the Department of Defense, who will be working in conjunction with Webhouse Incorporated to provide the ongoing program onsite. Webhouse Incorporated is excited to start this prototype program to support the female veterans and, and the community for what they have done for us.
Thank you, Sheila.
That's the, um, variance of use, um, that's, um, there is also a, I, I, a, um, variant or special exception approval that would cover the trade part, but that's the variance of use. So I don't know if you vote on them separately, attorney?
Well, we would, but we could discuss it as one unit, and is the petitioner here? Could you please approach the microphone with any questions?
Thank you. Uh, Greg Bauer here on behalf of Robert Farmer and Webhouse Inc., and, um, as Ms. Shine, um, appropriately indicated, this is a project for female veterans. Um, we are happy to address any questions you might have. The BZA gave a unanimous favorable recommendation for the special exceptions, two of them, and one for the variance of use. I can go through all the details, um, but I would note, this is, um, we've touched on this a few times during this meeting, this is on the eve of a holiday, and it's a veterans' holiday tomorrow, and, um, I'd like to take a quick moment, um, because of who I represent and because of what they've done, to thank all the veterans for all their service. I know one of them was up here, I think, starting the meeting, and, um, very thankful for that, and this is a way the Veterans Administration is gonna give back to the female veterans. I think Mr. Guernsey said it best, this is a help-up, not a handout. Um, that's what he said at the BZA meeting. So I'd be happy to address any questions you might have, and I do have the layout of the building, um, and the site plan, if you'd like to see that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Minchuck?
This is in my ward, and I know this project started out in the planning commission, which I also sit on, um, and I will be here to report to the rest of the council that, uh, this is a very good project, and I'm in full support of it. Um, I think it's a very good idea, I've seen the preliminary plans that were put together, this is a very nice building, um, and other bits mentioned before of, uh, you know, what is this gonna bring to the town? It's, it's what was already brought to the town, we're sitting in the chairs that we're sitting in because of these people that are gonna be in this home. So thank you, and I don't think, I don't see how anybody can say no to veterans on Veterans Day coming up tomorrow, so I'm fully looking forward to this project, and I fully support it. Uh, if anybody has any questions further than that, I'm here, I'll stay with you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. President, I only have one question for Greg, and, and this is, Jeff usually brings this up on all new businesses, and I don't know if it applies or not, but we do have the camera ordinance, and because this is gonna have a trade school in it, is there any, uh, was that brought up, Greg, at the BZA, or should we add that, Jeff, to the cameras that we, we ask businesses to install? I don't know.
I believe I asked that question, uh, when I was in the planning section, they already had that in the design work, if I'm not mistaken.
We can certainly, we'll comply with all ordinances in the town as part of the facility.
They had, there was some conditions on, on, on there, on, there was some conditions on the special exception, and I didn't hear that, but...
Okay.
But there were, um, all state and town ordinance, so it would be following, um, so that was a part of the camera ordinance.
Okay.
Greg, when do you anticipate, uh, starting the building of the project?
They are anxious to start, I think it's gonna be immediately, as soon as they come in and ask for an improvement location permit, which, um, I was told that they were in contact with the Veterans Administration and Department of Defense, and that might be within weeks that they come up here for an improvement location permit.
And they will be contacting our unions?
Absolutely. They already have, I have letters of support from the unions with me, if you'd like to see those letters, where they're gonna come in and provide training, and, um, these female veterans are gonna be members of the unions in this area, and they're gonna be counseled on homeownership at the facility, so they're gonna be home buyers in your community.
Thank you.
Mr. Minchuck, did you have a motion, please?
I'll debate the motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion approve.
Second. Two veterans on the council.
We have a motion by, uh...
Appreciate it.
Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway for approval of this, uh, BZA change. It's a C2 community commercial zoning district, Z29UV-1020. Questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Span?
Yes.
Councilman Hardaway?
Yes.
Councilwoman Minchuck?
Yes.
Councilwoman Usulak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Vice President White?
Yes.
President Bella?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
7-0, motion carries. Moving on to the second item. Mr. Bauer, you might wanna stay there, we have one more action to take.
Special exception approval, Z28E15-1020, Robert M. Farmer, Webhouse Incorporated, Water Tower Properties LLC, to allow a trade school and a daycare. It's location 7867 and 7877 Grant Street, C2 community commercial zoning district. Um, petitioner is requesting special exception approval from section 21-136 to allow the operation of a trade school and a childcare facility on 2.98 acres in a C2, um, community commercial zoning district. Webhouse Incorporated is under contract to acquire two lots referenced in the petition located at 7867 7877 Grant Street, Maryville, Indiana. They would like to acquire those two lots to construct a facility of approximately 6,100 square feet on one of the lots. The other lot would be un, um, unimproved and provide ample play and other space for the facility. The plans for the facility are, are adhered here to, to, um, your packets. Webhouse Incorporated intends to utilize the facility as a trade school for female veterans. The trade school would be staffed by union representative who will come to the facility during the week and provide training in various trades to female veterans. Webhouse Incorporated has already contracted the unions in the area, and the unions have expressed that they will participate in the training essential to the trade school. While the female veterans are attending the various training sessions, they will be conducted onsite. Daycare will be provided for the children who need supervision. A licensed daycare individual will provide those services, and it will be approximately staffed to address the needs of the children of the female veterans. As a result of those, um, those initial two uses on the website, on the site, Webhouse Incorporated is seeking special exception approval to operate a trade school and a daycare onsite, a daycare onsite. The trade school and daycare will operate from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The state of Indiana, state fire inspector and local fire inspectors will inspect the daycare and... daycare and the trade school facility before the operations. The conditions that were placed on this is for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only. The trade school and daycare are for those residents of the veterans' facility only, and all state and town ordinance are to be followed. Section 21-96 landscaping or opaque fence to be contiguous to the property zone residential.
Thank you, Sheila. Anything to add, Mr. Bauer?
No. It's the facility that Mrs. Schein described and the operation that's going to occur on that. I can certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Minchuck, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Minchuck, second by Mr. Hardaway, for approval of this BZA action. This is Z28E15-1020, open for discussion. No discussion? Madam Clerk Treasurer?
Councilman Span.
Yes, good luck.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Vice President White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven zero. Now the celebration can start. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
For those veterans here, thank you for your service. Thank you.
And Mr. Hardaway.
Moving on tonight to the next petitioner, Janice Brown. Ms. Schein?
Special exception approval, Z28E13-1020, Juanice Brown, DAS and DAS Incorporated, to allow a dine-in restaurant with drive-through and pickup window, 1441 East 82nd Avenue, in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. Petitioner is requesting special exception approval to allow a dine-in restaurant with drive-through lane and pickup window to be located at 1441 East 82nd Avenue, in a C3 highway commercial zoning district. The 3,298-square-foot building was approved and built in 1985 as a Dairy Queen and has had several restaurant users since then. Petitioner Juanice Brown would like to open a restaurant to be known as the Tropical Jerk Hut and Wrap. Petitioner was previously located at 5524 Broadway until owner sold building. The restaurant will have 20 seats. The building has an entrance for customers and a rear service door entrance. The building sits on over one acre, which gives ample parking for employees and customers. The hours of operation for the restaurant will be Monday through Sunday, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be approximately four employees. Petitioner is aware of the security camera ordinance. Petitioner obtained permits for interior upgrades on the building and hood system. Petitioner has signed the lease with latitude. Attorney has a copy of the lease, and petitioner has been in contact with the Maryville Conservancy District for this petitioner only, at this location only, and for this use only.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Question by Mr. Pettit, second by Mr. White, for approval of this petitioner, Z26E13-1020. Any questions or comments? Is the petitioner here?
Ready to say it, Mike?
Well, come forward. We want to maybe ask you a question or two. And Sheila, which building is this?
Little Dairy Queen.
Yeah, right across from Red Lobster.
JJ's Fish Shack right now.
Oh, got it, okay.
Right now, it's JJ's.
Got it, okay.
It's on the curve next to the economy inn, Rick.
Got it. No, no, I word it. I was just trying to picture it. Anything that you'd like to add before we take action?
No, just looking forward to being a part of the community of Maryville, hopefully to be able to help employ, you know, some Maryville residents.
Great. Mr. Pettit, did you have a motion? Or we already have a motion?
Yeah, we had a motion. I made the motion.
Sorry. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk Treasurer, roll call, please.
Councilman Span.
Hi.
Councilman Hardaway.
Yes.
Councilman Minchuck.
Yes.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Yes.
Councilman Pettit.
Yes.
Vice President White.
Yes.
President Bella.
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Seven zero, motion carries. Welcome.
Welcome to town.
Thank you. Good luck.
We'll be in for lunch soon.
Another empty building off the blocks.
We have your menu here, so Friday looks good. Thank you. Any old business tonight before us? Any new business before us?
Mr. President?
Mr. White?
Yes, I'd just like to congratulate President-elect Joe Biden and Kamala Harris, as well as also to congratulate Julie Althoff, who will sit on the planning commission with the town here. And additionally, I'd like to congratulate Delina Thomas in her election this past election day. All those are all winners. I just want to do a congratulations for them. Thank you.
Just for the record, Julie Althoff is coming off the commission.
Right. I just want to congratulate her.
I don't know if you knew that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other new business tonight?
With that being said, Mr. President, if we wind down into November, we need to check on our board and commission appointments. I think to Mr. Minchuck and Mrs. Uselak, there are a couple citizen members on the planning commission-
Yes, we have Brian. Brian Dearing, he is putting in his application as we speak. Julia is underneath our party, so we have to take applications for somebody in the Republican Party.
Do we want to make a motion, Mr. President, to have letters of interest submitted to Pat by a certain date?
Sure, we can do that.
Maybe by the end of December, would you say?
No.
No, you need him before that, because you guys will have a planning commission, depending on the planning commission membership and what we do with our election of officers should be in December as well.
Our election of the town council is in-
We pulled my calendar here, because this is going to be all commissions and appointments.
Police Commission, Stormwater, Planning Commission, BZA. Pat's going to have to check with Sheila and everyone.
I think we should advertise by next week, we should start, and then have it, the deadline be, I'm looking at December now.
How about the council meeting, before the, Friday before the council meeting in December, Jeff? What's the date?
The first council meeting is on the 8th.
So that Friday before at 4:30? Give us time to get them in the packets?
Yeah, the deadline be the 4th, and then this way we can start making our decision. Well, I mean, as long as we have it by the second meeting, we should be okay in it, or...
That's...
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't give a whole lot of time, so...
Okay, yeah. First meeting will be better than, okay. So from-
Not sure we have a motion if we just instruct our town manager to do so? I think that would be okay?
Yeah, that's fair.
That's my motion.
It's a motion? Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Pettit.
They're not important anymore, Rick.
Second by Mrs. Uselak, to do what we just discussed.
Applications for our-
Applications for any vacancies on the board.
At the proper date, and Mary Ann, good luck figuring that out for the minutes. Better be right.
As stated.
Whenever you do receive that list of vacancies from each commission or each board, if you can email us, that'd be great.
Is there any other discussion? Do we need a roll call, or is it just a voice vote?
I think a secret ballot would be an order of the President.
Please pass out paper. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
We can just go and vote.
Was that an aye, Mr. Pettit?
That was an aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
No secrets.
I guess the motion carries. I'm not sure. Anything else on our new business? Hearing nothing else. Public comment? Is there any public comment this evening? Seeing no public comment, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn after I announce that the next council meeting is November 24th at 6:30 p.m.
I have one thing, Mr. President, two things. One is that-
Mr. Hardaway.
The veterans, you know, we'd like to make sure that we recognize that veterans, Don and myself, are veterans that serve on the council. And normally every year, we have a Veterans Day program, but because of the extenuating circumstances, we won't have one this year, and I'm quite sure that everyone can understand that. And then the second thing is, the Salvation Army is looking for sponsors for their angel tree. And normally every year, some town employees take the angels, and if anybody's interested in being an angel tree sponsor, let me know, the count, and I will get angels brought down here to Town Hall. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.